Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order on March, sorry, February 9th, 2023. May I have Vice Mayor Daniels to lead us in the place, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. May I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Karpinski Costa.
Present.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daniels.
Here.
And Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
All right. Can I have a motion for approval of agenda? Any questions about the agenda, council members?
Move of approval?
Video statement.
Oh, oh, sorry. We wanted to do the video statement, sorry.
It's okay.
May I?
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, and the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replay is on Monday, February 13th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Great. Now, may I have the next item?
The approval of agenda?
Move of approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is public comment. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. If participating via Zoom, you may use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone, and I will unmute you when it is time to speak. Speakers are limited to five minutes each. When your name is called, please step forward to the podium and state your name for the record.
Great. So I have two speaker cards. Before we start the speaker, I just want to remind everyone that we're all friends here. You should feel very comfortable speaking in front of council. All of us have been at the podium at one point or another. You'll have five minutes to speak, but Brown Act prevents the council members from responding to your comment. So this is just a comment time, it's not a question and answer time, no discussion. Simply, please come forward and make your comment. So first up, I'd like to have Natalie Price comes up.
All righty, is this on? Thank you, Mayor Schaefer, Vice Mayor Daniels, and council members. Today, you will be considering granting a fee waiver to our Residents Empowerment Association of Citrus Heights, REACH, for the use of the community center on March 13th, so that residents may once again enjoy the community potluck. I am standing here today in favor of this much-needed waiver. Although I am president of Neighborhood 10, vice president of REACH, and serve on the Planning Commission, I am here today speaking only for me. I've said it many times, my favorite part of living in Citrus Heights is that just by being a resident, you are part of a neighborhood association. These groups meet monthly and offer an opportunity for residents to hear firsthand from our CHPD impact officers, our city leaders, resource groups, community businesses, and other important service partners. The neighborhoods not only keep our residents informed and connected, but they also lend agency to various city and park events, and serve as a channel for available grant monies, which create neighborhood improvements and improves the quality of life for our residents. Since the COVID-19 shutdowns, many residents have felt disconnected, some have even felt isolated. Many of the neighborhoods have suffered a dramatic loss in resident engagement. Some associations even became inactive until just recently. We need an event that promotes togetherness, one that fosters joy and brings back community connection. As both an anthropologist and a restaurateur, I have seen over and over again the powerful way in which sharing a meal unites people. Food ties to our senses. It resonates into lasting memories. Sharing a meal is the language of a shared humanity. Simply put, sharing a meal creates community. To have the city sponsor this event by way of a community center fee waiver worth $2,814.24 would not only make possible the REACH community potluck, but it would also help to meet the city council's three-year goal to enhance community vibrancy and engagement. Lastly, before I go, I want to invite the council, the city staff, and all of our residents to the community potluck on March 13th. Bring your favorite dish. Share a memory that's associated with it to those sitting at your table. Such togetherness will shine a light on Citrus Heights as a model of neighborhood engagement. Thank you.
And I will have to say, I certainly apologize to the council. That was actually for item six, and so I took that out of order, but just please keep that in mind. We do have another public comment from Daniel Thigpen.
Good evening, Mayor Schaefer, council members and staff. My name is Daniel Thigpen, and on behalf of the San Juan Unified School District, I'd like to extend an invitation to the community to lend its voice and participate in the process of creating an innovative elementary school program in Citrus Heights. So in recent months, just a little bit of background, a team of San Juan Unified Educators have been leading efforts to research new and emerging practices, understand community needs, and engage in a design process to create what we hope will be a model offering for students and families in our community. So we have not selected a location for this program, but we are committed to housing it in Citrus Heights to take advantage of the community's expressed desire for different types of learning. And we do plan to have a site location chosen this spring, hopefully with a launch in the subsequent school year in '24-'25. But of course, before we get there, we're still very early in the process, and it's important and critical that we collect voices from this community to inform the process, to learn our community's hopes and dreams and desires for early education and elementary education in Citrus Heights. And so tonight, we launched what will be a month-long series of public meetings at our Citrus Heights schools, opportunities for our elected leaders, for our city staff, and for residents in the community and families and neighbors to observe and participate in that process. So each of these meetings is designed for members of that school's community to learn more about the process, share about the needs of their students, and you're probably wondering when and where are they, so I would encourage you to go to www.sanjuan.edu. We have, it's one of our top news items, and we have a list of all of the upcoming dates and locations for those public meetings. You're welcome to attend any of them, and of course, we also have reached out to the Citrus Heights Sentinel to help get the word out, and our school communities are also pushing out that information to their families and students to help make sure that we have robust participation. So we hope that you can join us. We hope that you can help spread the word, and we look forward to continuing to partner with this community to meet the needs of all learners. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. May I have the next item, please?
The next item is presentation number four, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, recognizing the month of February as Black History Month.
Oh, do we have anyone here to receive the proclamation?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. They can just go ahead and read it, and we'll figure out who we should distribute it to. Thank you.
One step above a cellphone. All right. This is a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, recognizing the month of February as Black History Month. Somebody did some good research, by the way, on my comment as you hear these words. Took some research to figure this out. Whereas much of the City of Citrus Heights' strength and distinction can be attributed to the diversity of cultures and traditions that is celebrated by our residents, and whereas the National African American History Month first originated in 1926 as part of an initiative by writer and educator Dr. Carter G. Woodson to recognize the heritage and achievements of African Americans and to enhance knowledge about African American history. And whereas this year, the theme of Black History Month is Black Resistance, African Americans have resisted historic and ongoing oppression in all forms. By resisting, African Americans have achieved triumphs, successes, and progress. And whereas African Americans have played a significant role in the history of our nation and California's economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development while working tirelessly to promote their culture and history, and whereas as a result of their determination, hard work, and perseverance, African Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions to our community and our state, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas all Americans are encouraged to reflect on past successes and challenges of Africans Americans and look to the future to improve society so we all can live up to the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim the month of February 23, 2023, as Black History Month, and invite everyone to recognize this month to celebrate the diversity and character of our community and highlight the importance of sharing our culture, customs, and traditions with those around us. In witness thereof, you get to sign it.
So it just occurred to me that this might be an appropriate time. May I ask Councilwoman Portia Middleton to accept the proclamation?
Of course.
Thank you.
Be my honor.
If you would go down to the podium, and maybe there's a...
You got to sign it.
Okay, I'll sign it.
He's not going anywhere.
No. Yeah, let's all go down. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Okay. Councilwoman Portia Middleton, what have you been up to?
Well, no regional boards meetings as of yet, but on the heels of our proclamation, actually, Citrus Heights Arts is hosting their first annual Black History Month, a Taste the Soul event. It's going to be on February the 25th from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. right here in our community center, and it's really awesome they're doing this. They're using a local restaurant to supply the food, free crafts, free event for the kids to come out and learn more about African American history. There'll be a DJ, Granton Drumline is going to come out. This drum line is really famous. They've actually played in Japan, in France. They're known throughout our region, and it's also sponsored by myself and by Stones Gambling Hall and by a host of others that I just don't have enough time to list. But I would encourage you all to please come out to the community center, February 25th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and learn a little bit more about Black History and celebrate our community.
Great. So just a real quick comment about that, is that there was a question as to whether we wanted to recognize Black History Month in this meeting or the following meeting, considering they're doing that. I'm delighted that we made the decision to do it early.
That was a good call.
Very good, so, all right. So, Councilmember Karpinski Costa? What would you...
Well, I have been busy. So I attended a meeting with staff, like to get reintroduced to all the issues of our staff, and so that was good. Then I went to Disneyland for a mosquito conference. Now, the only reason I mention this, even though it was not in the course of my duties for the council, is that I'm available to speak to any group who wants to hear about mosquitoes, and especially as mosquito season starts to approach, book me early, because I love to do it. So that, then, Portia and I attended the boot opening for the fire, for the panhandlers down at the corner, and what, they panhandled? They're excluded from our ordinance, but they panhandled. And Portia got a plaque with the city, so I'm sure she gave it back, right?
Not yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So I did that, and then I had a sewer meeting yesterday, and the one thing I take from that that I would like to impart to you is that there are, if you are low income in the city, there are rebates of $175 a year, I believe it's per year, if you are certain income. It's kind of like, and I don't know that they advertise it that much, because they have a certain pot, they want to make sure they have that pot, so, but I think that citizens of Citrus Heights ought to know about it, so it's $175. I'm not quite sure what paperwork you have to fill out, but it probably is. So, and then there were some other incentive programs for septic to sewer, and I don't know that we have septic tanks in Citrus Heights. Do we have septic tanks? I don't think so. I think we're all on the sewer system.
No, we definitely do.
Oh, we do? So there are some incentive programs for converting if you have septic to go to sewer. There's some, when you are building and have to pay sewer impact fees, there's some incentives for deferring those payments. And so it was, that program seemed to be the most, of all the talks they had, most of them were contracts to spend gazillion dollars on their tertiary treatment plants, and it's, I'm going to take a tour, I've already lined up to take a tour of the plant, and so, and meet most of the staff, because we're still Zooming on meetings, so that was, that's okay. Then after that, on the same day, I participated in a League of Cities Roundtable, the most boring half hour, 45 minutes I have spent, so I have nothing to report on that, other than they told you how to go on the website and sign up for their listserv. So I asked, I says, what happens at listserv? Is it like next door, and they just pound you all day long with notifications that there's somebody doing something? So there's that. And then today, I had an STA meeting, Sacramento Transportation Authority, and that's a big one. It was a lot of information, but I'll tell you what I want to report on, because I thought this was cool. One of the things that the Sacramento Transportation Authority, STA, does is it provides the freeway service patrols. So if you break down on the freeway, there they are. And they have, they have lists of people who have sent in their testimonials, you know, better than AAA. So what you asked me earlier, Mr. Mayor, was they have 20 roving trucks. Their budget is $910,000 a year is their budget. You asked about that? And approximately, some comes from the state highway fund, and some comes from the money that STA has from sales taxes. So they fix within minutes, if you break down on the freeway, they're there within minutes. The average time anyone waited, I think, was seven minutes. They partner with Caltrans and CHP, but anyhow, I thought that's a neat program that is continued to be funded by STA. More will happen with STA, you know, as they try to increase their transportation projects around town, so more will happen with that. And I think that's all I have. Ta-da.
Great. Taff Lopez, Councilmember Taff Lopez, what would you have been up to?
Well, I have had no commission meetings or board meetings yet, but I do want to invite everyone here to the Kiwanis Club and Serroptimus Crab Feed on Friday, tomorrow night, and so that is right before the other crab feed, and also held at the community center, and we always have a good time, so please join us on Friday. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. So Vice Mayor Daniels, what have you been up to?
Thank you very much. Well, just to follow up, the other crab feed is the Citrus Heights Rotary Crab Feed, and that'll be on Saturday, Saturday at 5:30. That's usually a sellout. I don't know if they've already sold out, but if you're interested in going, that's a great event to go to. And then Tuesday will be the Citrus Heights Chamber Lunch. I believe it starts at 11:30, and if you're a business owner, get involved, get involved. Your chamber is there for you, get involved. No regional updates. I did participate in a cap-to-cap safety team briefing a couple of days ago, and we're working on solidifying what we will be discussing with our federally elected officials when we do cap-to-cap in April. And then, I think that's it, other than I do notice some youngsters in the audience, and I would like to have them come up to the podium, tell us who you are, where you're from, and why you're here. Come on, you got to get up. Who's the leader? There is a leader.
Welcome.
Hello. We are all from Casa Roble High School, and we are coming for assignment in our American Government class to learn about how you guys do stuff in these meetings, and we're doing an assignment writing up. We have to get one of the picture with some of you guys, too, at the end, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
We usually go to about 10:00 or 11:00 p.m., so that should be fine.
Perfect.
All right, you guys going to let him speak for you, everybody? Anybody else want to come up? There we go.
Okay, you're on camera, so what's your name?
My name is Jeremy.
Jeremy? Nice to meet you, Jeremy.
And, yeah, like Tyler was saying earlier, we are all here, we're in American Government, and we decided to choose tonight's meeting because it's one of the closest to where we all live. I don't actually live in Citrus Heights, I'm right on the border of it, and I know a couple of them do, so.
Hi, I'm Evan Latham. As both Jeremy and Tyler have stated, we're from Castle, and we're doing an assignment for our American Government class.
Awesome. Evan, you need to go into radio, okay?
You got a good voice there.
You got the voice.
Definitely. I've been told that by many people.
Hi there, I'm Nick Turner. I'm from Casa Roble, and I'm here for an American Gov. assignment.
Welcome, Nick.
And then the shy ones.
Hi, I'm Christine Garcia, and I'm a senior at Casa Roble High School, and, yeah, we're all here for the same assignment, basically.
Welcome, Christina.
Pardon my scratchy voice, but I'm Samantha Green, and, yeah, we're here for student government assignment from Casa Roble High School, and we're just, like, trying to see what your guys' meetings are about and how the agenda goes and stuff.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Well, you guys picked the right night, because we have a very, very small agenda, and we might set a record, I don't know. You think we'll be done by seven, I think, but...
Not a chance.
Pick the right night to come along. Oh, I don't know. Well, I wouldn't want to make them sit through that training.
No, we have to take a picture before...
Yeah, we'll do that.
...we start the training.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, I've just been, so I've been sitting on Secog, we had a Policy and Innovations Committee meeting. I am really enjoying the experience of meeting other leaders from other cities and understanding how different the needs are. When you look at the City of Auburn, you look at the City of Placerville, the City of Sacramento, the City of Citrus Heights, the needs are so very different, and it's really interesting to learn what the other cities' priorities and what their needs are. And so that was the only meeting I had since the last council meeting. So with that, I'm going to ask for the next item, please.
The next item is consent calendar items five and six.
And anybody want to...
Move approval.
Move approval? Okay. I have a move by Karpinski Costa, second by Middleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And all those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. All right, next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar number seven. It's the AB 1234 Mandated Ethics Training for Legislative Body Members. But did you want to take a photo with the students before we start that training?
Yes, we take a short break to take the photo before we start.
Do you want all of us, or just the mayor? Want me to take the photo for you?
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so the next item, I just want to make sure the audience is aware, that next item is our mandated ethics training. This takes about two hours, so that's pretty much, we'll have a couple of items after that, but anyone who wants to hang in for the training, certainly you're welcome to, but I just want to give you the opportunity to, if you wanted to head out now, that would be a good time. All right, with that, and the next item is?
It's our mandated AB 1234 training given by the city attorney.
Great.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, planning commissioners, and we have members of our Construction Board of Appeals here, so thank you. High school students, no offense taken that you're leaving for my training, but I totally get it. Yeah, so who's ready for ethics training, right? And this is, this is a very exciting part of our meeting. I was told to be funny, so that, you know, the Brown Act, Public Records Act, definitely lends itself to that kind of humor. So I wanted to, yeah, introduce myself, I'm the city attorney. I've done this, did this training last time, we did it over Zoom, so I do think this is a much better forum. It is meant to be an interactive training. You have questions as they come up, please ask me. So I'm going to try to scan the audience and look at all of our, all of our members that are here tonight to take the training. So partially, I get it, you're here because you have to be, right? The law does require that every two years, we've got to do this ethics training. There's also a sexual harassment training under AB 1825 that we'll do as well, but let's, let's take this one step at a time, and tonight will be the ethics training. So the Government Code does require, and we have a couple new members here, right? We have new members of the council, we also have new commissioners. You're required to get this done within one year of taking office, so a lot of you took office in November, we're well ahead of that. And that's going to be kind of my mantra tonight about ethics, and that is to exceed what that floor is, what the standard is of what the law requires. Let's try to be a little bit better than that when it comes to gaining public trust constituents. I did want to mention that this training does qualify for your other departments. I know we have people in a mosquito abatement commission, something along those lines. If you're in any other commissions, this training would qualify, you don't have to do it multiple times. And we will give you a certificate at the end as proof of what you went through. The law is a minimum, right? So sometimes you'll ask me, and I have individual conversations pretty much with every council member and some of the commissioners from time to time on conflict of interest and ethics questions. And my response, you'll often hear from me, yeah, that's legal, right? This is the standard. The question is, do you want to sort of go, potentially go beyond that? If your question about, let's say, a conflict of interest goes below that standard, the answer is very clear. It's a no, we're going to, let's say, recuse ourselves or not be participate in this discussion. But I think as officials of Citrus Heights, we want to, we want to go beyond what the law requires. This is when I talk to you, we'll be, here's what the law is, let's, maybe we should think about some other things in terms of like public perception, right? What is the public going to think about maybe you participating in a particular item that legally you don't have the threshold of having a conflict? And we'll go through those, so we're going to talk about what is a financial interest under the Public Records, or, I'm sorry, the Political Reform Act or Government Code 1090. sorry, the Political Reform Act or Government Code 1090. So law is a starting point for that analysis of public service. I consider it a floor and not the ceiling, and I think our sights are on what do we wanna do as a public servant. These are the four areas we're gonna get into tonight. I think these are, a lot of them are commonsensical. A lot of them, you're like, well, that makes sense, right? If I live within 500 feet of a project, I shouldn't be participating in that vote. Some of them aren't as commonsensical as you might think. And we oftentimes will ask you to consult with me on it, and I may not know the answer right away. It may be a thing that we're going to look through some case law and some codes to see what the answer is. So I think the other one takeaway point is, please utilize our office, utilize me. If you think you have an issue, you're concerned about it, reach out. And I try to be very timely and responsive in getting back to you on that. So we're gonna talk about personal financial gain, right? A little bit, in some ways, laughable because it's, you think as a council member, I think you tend to lose money as being on the council or even commissioners. Of how many hours you put in, it is not in this position to make money, but there are laws in place, thanks to a few cities we'll name nameless down south, that have caused us to do some of these trainings, where people did take advantage of their position. Hence we do the training. And potential perks of the office and other personal advantages, we'll call it, by being in the position that you hold. We'll talk about whether those are, which ones are illegal, which ones are maybe a waffler, which ones are okay. Transparency laws, that is the Brown Act and Public Records Act. We'll talk about that. And fair processes, this applies to planning commission, construction board of appeals, and the city council. When you have a hearing before you, let's say for a conditional use permit or some other type of activity, we're gonna give the applicant, or potentially an appellant, if it comes to the city council, let's say an action has been appealed by the planning commission, the opportunity to be heard. You know, what does that mean? How much time do they get? What kind of noticing do they get? We're gonna make sure all that's done properly. So, when it comes to a legal challenge, it's not so much usually about the substance, it's usually about process. Did we give somebody the appropriate amount of time and the opportunity to be heard and follow the processes when it comes to a decision? Because the courts do give a lot of deference to the judicial body, you're considered quasi-judicial bodies in the decisions that you make. They're not gonna usually overturn it unless it's completely out of the realm. So this first group, personal financial game, really the main goal we're getting is, as public servants, you're not supposed to benefit from your position. I think that kinda goes without being, you know, obvious, but there are some areas that can be a problem. That first one, bribery, right? Let's hope that's not any, we're in our vocabulary of an issue. I'm gonna give you a case study here where it definitely was. And there was actually a recent one down again, Southern California. City official that took a bribe and is now serving five years in prison for that. Political Reform Act, that's the law about when you recuse yourself. When there's something that you have a potential financial or an actual financial interest in, you're gonna leave the room and can't participate in that vote. Government Code 1090 is a little more extreme in the Political Reform Act. This is regarding contracts. You can't have a vested interest in a contract. Campaign contributions, there's a new law that just came out January 1st on that, we're gonna get into that a little bit. And then future employment issues, within one year, there's some laws about what you can do with the city after you leave office from your position. Okay, the bribery case, right? Don't solicit, receive, or agree to receive a benefit in exchange for official actions. The penalties are severe. The case I was referring to was, there was a city down, I think that would be, it's the High Desert, that's San Bernardino County, maybe Riverside County, where a city council member took a $10,000, I'll call it a bribe, basically a payment in exchange to allow a certain business, a permit to exist in the city. 100% no, like, that can't happen. But it does happen, and I think sometimes it may be a little more discreet than that, and we'll get into the, you know, there's issues about potential campaign contributions, or people taking you out to lunch. There are rules that pertain to what's allowed and what's not allowed. I think everyone knows a $10,000 check to get an application approved is a non-starter, right? Also aiding and abetting is, when it comes to bribery is an issue. So if you were to help, let's say you're helping an employee who was involved in something, you could also be, have a SB 952 violation for that, under that Senate bill. So this is the case study, I brought this up before, this was a big one that happened where the executive director had engaged in a whole variety of corruption. They're getting essentially kickbacks on entertainment that was happening at the Coliseum, to the tune of $2 million, right? This is serious. And hence why, you know, the person was sentenced to prison time, probation, and a significant half a million dollar restitution fine. So those maybe come a little more into play when you have huge venues like that, but still, even at a smaller level, you know, we don't wanna be anywhere in the media or have any issue with anything related to that. So similarly, if you're receiving awards for appointing someone to public office, I don't know why anybody would wanna pay to be a planning commissioner, board of, construction board of appeals member. You do great work, but I don't think it's something that you're, that a council member, you'd say, hey, here's a couple thousand dollars to appoint me. But that's why it's on there. Embezzlement, this does happen, and sadly, there was a case just, if you looked at the news, in the last couple weeks, out of Placer County, a city in the county had an employee who embezzled about $300,000 and was just sentenced, I think within the last two weeks, to just about a year in jail and two years probation. So it does happen. I would say that's more potentially on the employee side, because they have access to funds than a council member or a commissioner does, but nonetheless, you know, be aware, these things are happening right in our midst. So I wanna talk about the Political Reform Act. And this is about, if you have a financial interest in a decision, you need to recuse yourself. So we're gonna go through what the steps are to what is considered a financial interest. So I'll read the rule. A public official may not make, participate in making, or attempt to use their official position to influence a governmental decision when they know or have reason to know they have a disqualifying financial interest. So I wanna go through what is considered a disqualifying financial interest and what kind of decisions we're talking about. This also includes the finances of spouses and partners and dependents, right? So if it, I've had this question posed to me before, in fact, it was a recent one, not in this jurisdiction, but something that our firm represents in a different jurisdiction, was, I have, this is a lady who had a son who was gonna be the applicant. She's on the planning commission. Technically, that son, the son who's the applicant is not a dependent. This is, the son is, by the way, of age, right? So if it's somebody who's a minor and is a dependent, you report on your taxes, that would be a problem. I said, you know, right, by the law, you don't have a conflict, but this looks really bad, right? You're voting on something that a personal member of your family, your son, is the applicant. She agreed and decided to not vote on that. But, so right now, the definition of who somebody within that immediate family is, is just spouses and dependent children. Or potentially you have dependents who aren't children, like if you had a senior, your parent, you're still taken care of and you report them on your taxes, that's a disqualifying person, too. The interesting, I think, on this is that the impact could be positive or negative. So some people think, well, I can vote on something because this is gonna hurt me financially, right? Let's say I'm approving a project next to me that's not gonna help my property values. This is gonna bring it down. That's still considered a conflict under the law, so. All right. So these are the steps to analyzing a conflict. This is what I'm gonna go through with you individually. If you come to me and say, I think I have a conflict, these are the financial situation that's before me, I'm gonna run through these steps, because these are right out of, right out of the government code. First one, is it reasonably foreseeable that the governmental decision will have a financial effect on any of the public official's financial interests? Okay, if the answer is no, then there's no conflict. If you don't think there's anything foreseeable, that this decision you're gonna make is gonna have any impact on your finances, then you're good to go. If the answer is yes, we're gonna go to step number two. Now, is it foreseeable that the financial effect will be material, right? Because I think arguably, every single decision you make has a financial impact on you, positive or negative. But if you're voting on approving any, even the project's nowhere near you, it sort of increases or hurts the value, let's say, of your property values in the city by some minuscule amount. It's gotta be material for you to have to disqualify yourself, and I'm gonna talk about what the materiality standard is. Step three is, can the public official, can you show that that material effect is indistinguishable of the public generally? So if you have, if what you're voting on does impact you personally, but it really impacts a really large part of the city, then that's considered not a conflict that you'd have to recuse yourself on. And the last thing is, so if we applied those steps, and that means the public official cannot make, participate in making, or any way influence the decision. Any thoughts or comments on that? Yes, Mayor?
Yes, thanks for asking.
You bet.
So, last year, council member Bruins had, she recused herself from the Arcade Creek Trail project. And when I was thinking about that, I was like, how would that impact? Or because it was within 500 feet of her home, I'm not sure that I would see that that project would have a negative or a positive impact. And I think out of the abundance of caution she recused herself. But in that situation, do you see, could you envision that there was a, some kind of conflict?
Yeah, how about this, Mayor? Instead of using that particular analogy, just because it's a case we sort of had, I'll just say, let's say a new situation. There's a trail running by your house that is similar to the Arcade Creek Trail.
Okay.
And your house is within 500 feet of that. The rule here on the materiality of the finances is with regard to issues of sources of income or money to you, how it values. Real property considerations, if you own that property, they don't, all they say is, is the property worth more than $2,000? So any home in Citrus Heights is worth more than $2,000. So if you have a creek, or, I'm sorry, a trail running by your house that we're gonna approve, and it's within 500 feet, you probably need to recuse yourself. The only exception would be what I mentioned before about impacting so many people. This, if you have a trail that's running through the city and probably comes through 15 to 20% of properties, now I'd say, man, the impact on you personally is so indistinguishable of how it impacts everybody else, you could vote on that. So I think the short answer is, is there a conflict? Yeah, I think there is, because real property is different than the money if it's within 500 feet.
Question.
Yes.
But in that particular case, while it may affect a broad number of people, virtually none of those other people have the power or the authority to vote on this project, as opposed to the one elected official that does have the power to vote on the project. So I would argue that they do have a greater potential influence, you know, one way or the other.
I think that's a good point. For those who couldn't hear it out there, the question was, the person has the, is unique because they're a voting person, whereas everybody else doesn't really have a say in it. I think that's a fair point, and I think it goes to perception, right? So you're trying to look fair. And so in that case, I think that was the right call, but, you know, reasonable minds can differ. Here's a good talking point on that. Anytime you're not sure about an issue, and it's a waffler, we're not positive, you can always contact the Fair Political Practices Commission, the FPPC hotline, and get an opinion, an official opinion from them. I've done that a couple times. They do a good job, they actually respond fairly quickly, and that way, if anybody ever says to you, you know, I think it looks bad, why are you doing that? You can say, well, here's a letter from the FPPC that says I can vote on it. So that's something we can do. Any other thoughts or questions on those? So this is, I wanna, we're gonna go through what a financial interest is. So if you have a business entity that's contracting with the city, applying for an entitlement, trying to get some regulatory act through the city, and your interest in that business is $2,000 or more, that's considered a material financial interest. So if you own a little piece of a business that's valued at $1,000 and that's who's up before the planning commission, you don't, you could step down, you could recuse yourself, but you're not required to. There is an exception, so if you notice on your Form 700s, sometimes they'll ask you what kind of stock you hold or any, and I always think it's a little funny, because we do contract with, potentially with like Microsoft or Oracle or publicly traded companies for contracts that do, you know, software here. But realize, you gotta have 1% of the company's stock. So if you've got, you know, several million dollars in stock, you know, then we're talking about a conflict. Otherwise, just because you own stock in a company that contracts with the city, you're not...
I did not know that.
Yes.
Because, you know, I had stock in Motorola and we ordered all of the police radios. And so I thought I couldn't vote on it.
You could have voted on it. And well, it depends on how much you have.
Ruth Hans said I could, yeah.
Yep, very good. So this is, I'd say this is more of an example of, there are a couple little areas that get a little into the weeds. We're not gonna brief all that tonight, but if you think you got something, you bring it to me, we run it through and we get you the answer, and then you know what you wanna do. So here's a real property issue, this is kind of what the mayor brought up before. The real property interest has to be $2,000 or more, which for almost any real property in the city of Citrus Heights is gonna be valued at that. Maybe you own a parcel, an empty parcel with 10 other members of your family and it's only worth $20,000, and so your value is somewhere near or below 2,000, that might be an exception. But I think when it comes to a project or an action that involves property of $2,000 or more, and you can see what those kinds of ideas are, development plan that applies to property, a rezone of that property, maybe fees or assessments that apply to the property, certainly if we're gonna buy that property, sell it, those would be interests. When it comes to property, you usually hear this one, right? I think this is the analysis we often get into, it's called the 500-foot rule. It used to be that that was a firm rule. If you're within 500 feet and it's just like a corner of your APN to a corner of the APN that's being impacted, you would recuse yourself. Now they've, the law's changed, so it's fuzzier, they're saying if you're within 500 feet or less, unless there's clear and convincing evidence that the decision will not have a measurable impact on your property, you don't have to recuse yourself. I think my going in would be, if you're within 500 feet, why mess with it? Just, you should recuse yourself. I mean, that's why we have, you know, we've got these maps of your homes, right? We have a little circle around them and we look to see which, what projects could be potentially within that circumference of that circle. The fuzzier area when it comes to property rights is if it's between a 500-foot and 1,000-foot distance from your property. That is potentially gonna be a conflict if it has these two areas. If it's got income-producing potential or impacts the highest and best use of your property, you'd wanna recuse yourself. So I think if you're in that area, we'll talk about it, right? Well, we'll see if that's something you need to recuse yourself. Outside of 5, outside of 1,000 feet, you're presumed to not have a conflict. Now that presumption could be rebutted if there's clear and convincing evidence that the decision would have a substantial effect on your property. Maybe there's some huge, boy, I mean, we could use this Sunrise Tomorrow Plan or something like a specific plan we're doing, and your property is 1,005 feet away from that. And it could have, you know, maybe this really does impact your property and your property value. That might be one where you do, even though you're outside that 1,000-foot, I think that's one you might wanna really consider thinking twice about voting on. Any thoughts or comments on those?
I have a quick comment, and just to kind of put people, put this in perspective, your typical lot is about, if it's a 5,000 square foot lot, it's used, typical lot's about 50 feet wide. My lot happens to be 100 feet wide, so that's true for most of the neighbors, most of my neighbors. So if you're, if the project is within 10 lots of your home, you're probably impacted.
Lots?
10 lots.
A lot?
Yes.
Yeah, that's probably a good rule of thumb, right? The other material impact would be a source of income to you of at least $500. So if somebody is, you buy, someone, maybe you sell goods or services to an individual who pays you in your employment over $500 and that person's coming before the council for an action, or if it's a sale of personal real property... for an action, or if it's a sale of personal real property of somebody who has, is a source of that kind of money, you got to look to potentially recuse yourself as well. That's a pretty low threshold, right? So especially if you're in, um, you know, a business that does a lot of, a lot of retail business and you might realize, wow, I, I, maybe I do sell $500 or more to a particular person coming forward. But we, we can, we could talk about, talk about that. This one I'm just showing for, we're not going to go through all that, but nonprofits have a, have a unique, have unique rules. So if, if you, I'll just say it this way. This is if you are employed by nonprofits. So if you work for a nonprofit organization and they come before the city council or planning commission, it's not as, it, it's, it's a little different. They give a little more leeway. But if you are, I've been asked before, oh, I'm on the board of directors, or I am a member of Rotary or name the, that's, that's not going to implicate conflict issues. Maybe you think you want to step down because it looks something, an issue, but, but that's not going to meet the threshold when it comes to nonprofits, just because you're on the, um, board of directors or you're a member of that group. So, um, if you're working for a government entity and you're an official, you only, it says you're, you can vote on something related to your government entity. So we've, sometimes we have people who are, right, maybe a police officer at another organization or you work for a government entity and we're going to contract, you know, we do contracts with Sat County all the time. If one of you were an employee of Sat County, you can still vote on, on that contract as long as there's not some unique effect on you in particular. Like if you're the main person related to it, that would be, that would be a potential conflict. But for the most part, government entities get a little bit of an exception. Do we have anybody who works for government entity that? Oh, well then, here we go. Yes.
Ryan, there's a, currently an effort to, um, update council pay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that'll end up being a state law if it passes, but will that have to come back to us as a, uh, something we agree to do? And then how would we vote on that if it's in our own, what would it? We would vote on it, probably not get it, and then the next council members that are elected would get it.
We voted on putting ourselves in the purse system.
Yeah.
So.
We did.
Yeah, you can't all recuse yourself, right? Or nobody would vote on it.
How would that be resolved then?
So there's a very specific government code on that. And what it says is you can only do it at sort of the end of a term impacting the next term, and it can only go up a certain amount. So you can't, I think if you can give like a 5% raise per year, depends on the size of the city too, the, the government code has a certain amount. But if you haven't done it in 10 years, you can, you could go up potentially 50%. But you've got to wait to a certain time at the end of a term, right before an election, before you can do it. So this council could do it in 2024, even though not all of you are up for election. Otherwise, you'd never be able to vote on it. So if you want to give yourself a raise next meeting, it's not going to happen. How about that? Yeah. I know that's not what you're asking. Business entities. So if you have a financial interest with respect to any business entity in which you are a director, officer, partner, trustee, employee, or hold some position in management, that's considered a conflict if it becomes, if it, if it comes before your, your body. Okay, gifts are, are a unique area that we're going to also talk about. The gift limit does go up, uh, each year. Right now it's $590 per calendar year. So it's not, it's not from January 1st to December 31st. It's, you know, from now, someone gives you 550 bucks today and in December or in January of 2024, they give you another, we'll say $50, it gets you to 600, that would be an improper gift. And if you get a gift, well, you're not allowed to accept a gift at that amount, but if you, you definitely can't vote on it because you now have a financial interest. And there's also reporting requirements on your Form 700 that I'll talk about as well. My guess is gifts aren't, aren't a, aren't a big part, right? But when you're, you know, if you're working for, if all of a sudden, you know, a big project came in, you know, you might have somebody who says, uh, here's a couple tickets to the Kings game, right? You realize, wait a minute, those tickets happen to be worth 300 bucks a piece. You don't think about it till after the fact. That would be, um, an improper gift in the first place, but you, that you couldn't vote on that person's thing if they, if it came back around. And, and this does happen in jurisdictions where you have especially significant contractors. I've also seen it where it's a big, if there's a new contract when it comes to like waste hauling or, uh, utility services, sometimes they'll try to get involved in that game. So you have to be careful there. I mentioned this a little bit earlier, and that is the, the, an impact on you does relate to your immediate family. So personal finances material, if the official or your immediate family members receive some measurable benefit or a loss from the decision. And then if you, that immediate family member, as I mentioned, is a spouse or dependent children You can do self-appointments, right? So the council does this pretty often. Usually it's the mayor making appointments, but the council usually ratifies it total. The fact that you might appoint yourself to something is fine. That's considered, um, a reasonable participation. I don't know if all of you have done this before. We, we've, we've certainly had recusals in the past, and I think you've all seen it. Not, maybe not quite as much on planning commission, but we have. It's, it's happened before. So I want to talk about what that looks like. It is not just, I just, you know, sit there and they vote on it and I can keep weighing in, just when it's time to vote, I can say I have a, I'm, I'm going to recuse myself. You do need to announce your conflict at the beginning of that item. You would leave, completely leave the room in the back. That way you can't sit in the back and tell your council members to vote on it or your commissioners, you know, to try to influence them. You, so you can't, and you cannot discuss or influence it. So just because you have a, you have a conflict, if you were to, even to staff members, to say, this is, this is how I want this item to go down, that would be, um, that would be improper. The fairly new FPPC rule is you've got to announce what the conflict is. A couple of years ago, people would just say, I have a conflict and I'm not going to vote on it. And that was fine, but now they want you to state what it is. So I live within 500 feet of this project, I'm going to step aside. Or this is, um, you know, my spouse's company coming before here, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm going to recuse myself because of, because of that, because of that conflict. There was also a past practice change too about, sometimes commissioners or council members would just arrive late to a meeting because the first item they had a conflict in, or they would leave early if the last item related to them, and they wouldn't say anything. They just say, I, you know, I'm, I'm coming in later, leaving early. Now the law says if you're going to do that, you need, you need to explain why you did. I think it sort of begs the question of, well, how do they know I didn't just get stuck in traffic? As opposed to having a, some undisclosed conflict? But just keep that in mind, if, we need to announce it. We want to tell the public what the, what the reason is why you're, why you're not voting on it. There is, yeah, you bet.
So, so if you have a conflict with, um, a situation and you refuse yourself and you announce it at the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And you're quite jovial with your, your fellow members, don't you think that could persuade them to vote in your favor? And, and instead of just not saying anything, to persuade them to vote in your favor?
Yeah. Do you think the mics can pick that up?
There's a problem there.
The question was, I think there are a couple people online, um, is, 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 does it inf- influence your fellow members if you're, they like you maybe, or you're jovial about it and you step off and you're thinking, of course I'm going to vote for my thing. I live close to it or my wife's thing or whatever. That's why you're not supposed to influence. You're not supposed to act like, hey, hook, hook me up. But the truth is, yeah, people like you or not like you, you're going to step off and there's not much we, there's not much we can do about that. There is something called Government Code 1090 that I'm going to get into, and that is a contract with the city that is considered impugned of the whole board. And so they cannot vote on a contract related to you, even if you step off. Okay? So I'll get, maybe I'll talk about, well, I'll talk about that in a little bit, but that's, that is, it's a good question because in certain situations, yeah, you've, you've now, for lack of a better term, tainted the rest of the commission to vote on something if it's, if it's a financial contract. If it's you live near somebody or whatever, that's, that you can just recuse yourself.
So Ryan, that, that certainly the consequence of that scenario where you, you're asking that the person, and we don't know what the scenario exactly is, but the, there may be a party that feels like they were injured by your jovialness and your influence over the council, so you could potentially open the city up for a lawsuit, um, because that particular person thinks they've been injured by this decision. So I think that's a, I don't think anybody voluntarily wants to open themselves up to litigation, even whether it's a personal litigation or litigation against the city.
No doubt. And guess, if there's litigation, the subpoena is going to be for emails, texts, related to any conversations you've had. So we, we peel back that onion and all of a sudden we find out that you did recuse yourself, but you told the rest of your council members, make sure you vote for this. We got, we got a problem. And then it's going to void that action and potentially have other, other repercussions there too.
That's not necessarily my scenario. My scenario is just by me saying, hey, I'm recusing myself because of X and all these people like me. And they're like, I think it's a human nature to go, all right, Jim's a good guy.
Yeah.
And, and I think by recusing myself anonymously, they don't know why. It's a catch 22.
It is a catch 22. The law requires you to announce what the conflict is. So you do have to say it more for the public so they know what's going on. But yeah, I mean, the, the laws aren't perfect, right? I mean, there's, there's definitely collateral issues associated, and I think you've raised one.
But the other remaining members are not upholding their responsibilities in considering the, the project on its merits. I mean, whether they like the, the recused commissioner or not, they should be evaluating the project on its merits.
Well, and, and it works both ways. It works for, if they, if you're not liked in the community and.
Yeah.
You know?
Like, vote him down.
Yeah. No, good points, for sure. So items on consent, you don't have to leave the room unless that item gets pulled from the calendar. We've had that before, right? Where a member would say, I gotta, I'm going to recuse myself from item seven on the consent. We wait to see if it gets pulled, they don't have to leave the room, and then the voting will be just from the other members on that particular item and they vote, the rest of council can vote on the rest of the consent calendar.
You still have to announce that though, right?
You do announce it, yes. Thank you for clarifying. And you just only leave the room if the item gets pulled off consent, right? So here are the penalties. This is meant to scare people, I guess, a little bit when it comes to these issues. They realize, you know, there's definitely misdemeanors, fines, forfeitures, attorneys' fees. And really, I think a lot of this is about embarrassment to the city and, and hurting our reputation with the public if, if there are articles written about us because we violated some political reform act, even though maybe we could fix it, right? You go back and redo a vote, it's just, it's not a good look. So this is the one that you mentioned, um, or, or this is, this is where you cannot just recuse yourself. Everybody, the whole city can't vote on something, and that is Government Code 1090. And that's when an officer or an employee is prohibited from having a financial interest in a contract made by them and the body that they remember. That example would be, so this, this is an example I actually did have of, I have a friend who was a construct, a concrete construction person, and he wanted to run for council in the city, and he did a lot of work for that city, his company did, like 100, maybe more than 100, several hundred thousand dollars a year. And he said, hey, I want to run, I just, you know, I want to make sure this wouldn't impact my business. I said, 100% it would impact your business, right? You can't, you can't be on the council and just say I'm going to walk out of the room and they hire construction company X, which is your company, or if you're a major player there, to approve it. Because they might, the image to the comp, the, the public is they like you and they're going to, they're going to award contracts to the guy who left the room. Yes, yes, sir.
So isn't that what, exactly what Trump had done? Putting all this stuff into.
Putting all this stuff into holdings and that he couldn't touch it, but then his decisions. You know, I'm going to, I, I'm going to, I'll leave that one alone. I hear your point. I'll, if there's a city one that comes up, I can analyze it all day, but these, the federal laws that would apply to him, I, I just am not an expert in that. But I, point taken, right? So yes, you can't, if you've got a contract related to you, sorry, it's, it's out. So probably tell somebody, if you want to run for planning commi, or run for city council, get appointed planning commission, and you do business with the city of Citrus Heights, like significant business, you're probably not going to want to get appointed unless you're willing to give up that, those contracts. That's where it says, abstention's not enough. The city is prohibited from entering into a contract with an official that has that kind of interest. Yep, makes sense? So there are, there are some, like every law, right? There's exceptions, and that would be when you have it considered a non-interest. And that is a full exempt, so even though you have a, let's say your company has a contract with the city, but you, it has no impact on you at all financially, um, you potentially might have an exemption there. We'd have to look into that. Or if your interest is so remote, so miniscule, you're not like the owner of a company or this is a very small financial interest, that you could do the whole recusal thing and let the rest, let the rest of your board or council vote on that item. Again, I'll help you through each of those, and I'm not even going to go through the, these are some of these non-interests, right? If you own 3%, so if it's a company, you only own 3% of stock and it's less than 5% of your income, uh, when it comes to reimbursement of expenses, anyway, these are some of the specific, what are considered non-interests of 10, Government Code 1090, where you could still either vote on it or potentially just recuse yourself and let the rest of the, the board, um, approve it. This does apply to consultants or independent contractors as well, right? So if I, I'm an independent contractor of the city, and if I wanted to have the city approve some contract that, another company that I'm involved in, I can't just step aside and let this, this city, that would be, that'd be improper. So it's got to be a consultant or an independent contractor who has a, you know, sort of a significant, almost like a department head level type interest. Like sometimes cities contract their city engineer. Sometimes they contract, well, you know, we have a fire department, we contract. So those kinds of consultants, potentially they're, um, they're contract, if, if they have another interest in a business that they want to have a contract for, that would be also subject to, to having problems. It's not just the officials in this room. It could, it could also apply to independent contractors. Okay, the penalties on this, the contract is, is going to be voided, and this, this does happen. I've definitely seen this before after the fact, we find out there was a, there was a conflict there and the contract is void. You could sometimes bring it back and have it redone without that member, but sometimes the damage has been done. Like they've already influenced everybody affiliated with it, so now it just means we're not going to be able to enter into that contract. But this one is a felony. The other one was a misdemeanor. 1090 is, is, is no kidding. This is a pretty, this is serious, and you may have to refund the money, pay attorneys' fees to anybody who protests it, and then forfeit any goods, services or property that were, had been transferred to the, to the city. There were, this is the case I want to mention, this is just from last year. Uh, you may have heard about this one. This was a, a Bay Area Rapid Transit. BART had a conflict where, um, it was a $40 million construction conflict where one of the managers of BART had a spouse who was involved in the, the construction company, right? So wow, that construction company is probably not happy at all, they're going to potentially lose a $40 million contract, um, but that's, that's how it goes sometimes, right? If you, if you have a, a spouse or a dependent child who's affiliated with that organization and they're coming forth with a contract, that contract's likely to get voided, even if it's a, especially if it's a big $40 million construction con, contract. Okay, campaign contributions. I want to talk about, about this area. There's some new law that just came out beginning of the year on January 1st about it. The big thing is $250 is the, is the campaign contribution amount that starts to make these laws implicated. So less than that, people can contribute all they want to that amount. You probably have to report it. Over $100, you usually report in your, with your PAC if you've raised over, I think, 2,000. But, um, so if, if somebody contributes to your camp, they, well, they, you cannot vote if somebody's contributed $250 to your campaign while a project is proceeding or within three months after that project has come before you. So right now, we're not really in campaign season, so it's not as relevant, but people could still have their committees open and maybe they are receiving funds. But as it gets closer to 2024, I think it's something you need to be aware of. But as it gets closer to 2024, I think it's something you need to be aware of. This is the new law though. The second bullet, that you can just be disqualified from participating in a decision. This is the new SB 1439. If someone contributed to your campaign of $250 or more within the last 12 months. That go, that reaches back a ways. All right? The question I think I was posed by this council was, does that retroactively go back to 2022? Or does it start January 1st with the law? The last one, the FPPC did answer that question for us and it does, it does not retroactive. It starts January 1st. So anybody who contributed to campaigns right in the last election season, last year in 2022, we don't need to worry about this. But going forward, you gotta think about that. You know, if you, maybe you don't wanna accept campaign contributions from somebody that you know is going to have a project or have some kind of dealings with the city going forward.
Hey, Brian?
Yes.
So, um, on CACOG, we actually had legal counsel weigh in on this. And for them, for that board, it is retroactive to 2022.
You can set your own policies if you want to. If you wanna bring it up as a future agenda item that you wanna, we can, we can go above and beyond the government code.
That, that's what he was just warning that, hey, it, we are considering, uh, 2022 as part of the, this new law.
And you know what, Mayor, probably what that could have been? This, this thing with FPPC just came out in the last 10 days. They, or maybe it was two weeks ago. They just made this, a lot of city attorneys and other general councils were worried, what do we, what, when does this go back? And so they made that announcement. If that meeting was outside of two weeks ago, they may not have had that.
It was a Thursday a week ago today.
Well, you can enlighten them if you'd like.
And for the sake of the planning commissioners, we asked you once, what about someone who would give you the contribution? Cause he wants you to have to recuse yourself.
Right? That's something to think about too. Maybe somebody wants you off, not be able to vote. Here's, here's $251. Now you're, now you're disqualified.
Why would a planning commissioner need any contribution at all?
Well, actually planning, yeah. I, I don't know. You don't have a, you don't have, you don't get campaign contributions. You could get, the gift rules apply to you though. So that's a good question. When it comes to planning commission, it actually have to be a gift amount over $590 to disqualify you. These are, the, the 250 to 590 zone only applies to elected officials.
Oh.
Right?
Well, that's true, cause they don't campaign.
They don't campaign, yeah.
Some don't.
Yes, right? Future employment, just, this is just for, actually, this doesn't apply to planning commission as well. Just elected officials and the city manager. There is a very specific law about participating in a decision with your future employer that you're negotiating. So if a city manager, Ash is listening on the phone, I hope he's not looking for another job, but if he was actively negotiating a contract, let's say with a, he used to work in private housing and a housing developer like that, and that housing project is coming before the city, that would be a conflict that he'd, he'd have to recuse himself from, okay? If, and then same thing for within one year after you leave the council or a city manager leaves the city. If you're on the council and, and your term expires in 2024 and a company wants to hire you basically to be their lobbyist to help run it through the city, you can't do that for one year from when you left the council. After, so if, yeah, well, you, you know, like if city manager Henry Tingle wanted to come and lobby the city now, no problem, right? He, he could do that all day long. Um, city manager Chris Boyd, actually, he's just outside of a year, I think. So he could too. But it, those would be the, just examples of, of you've gotta wait that one year to, uh, to wait. And so, and Ash, don't, don't, don't be leaving us. I know you're listening. So this is the best practices, right? We're trying to avoid temptation. Don't, don't, if it looks funny, it smells funny, let's stay away from it. I can help you if you're not quite sure. And look at every decision and ask yourself, is, is there some kind of financial interest to me in this, in this 95%? There's no impact. But every once in a while, there's one, especially property, you know? If you own a, a business, you own land, you rent something, it certainly can be within that area. Okay, we're gonna switch gears a little bit to perks. Again, kinda funny, I think, in some ways, like what are the, some, what kind of, you know, what kind of perks do you get? If anything, you're, you're, you're losing a lot of your time and money to be in these, uh, these positions. But there are times where people can sometimes get, um, into trouble here. Gifts, honor area, which is like, um, if you get like a speaking engagement gift. We always talk about, you've heard of gift of public funds, right? We gotta make sure funds are used for a public purpose. And maybe you get some kind of, there's prohibitions on free and discounted travel. Again, does that apply to the, everybody? I, I, I don't know. I don't know if I raise my hand when I'm about to get on a flight and say I'm a planning commissioner for Citrus Heights, put me in first class. That is maybe a little less likely, but, see, there's my joke. You wanted a joke, Councilor Krista, right?
Let me mark it down. We find that.
You waited. We got it. Thank you. Um, so gift is anything that can offer some personal benefit to you that's greater to you than what you, if you pay for something, that's, that's not a gift. So there's exceptions if you're reciprocity, like if you're, if, if, if somebody who is coming before the council or commission gives you a Christmas gift, but you also gave them one because it's, you know, a friend, that's, that's considered a, okay, right? That's, that's an exception. But realize gifts could be meals, could be entertainment. I mentioned the tickets to, you know, Kings, Niners, something like that, that, that happens. Travel and lodging. And then there are rules when it comes to tickets to events. I, I just say consult with me on that because a lot of times you'll get tickets to go to things, right? There's usually, fine, if it's, um, something related to, it's a, a public purpose or benefit that's local, that's fine. But were you getting tickets to a sporting event? This is, you know, this is where people have gotten in trouble, where they're all of a sudden flying first class to a, you know, Dallas Cowboys game on somebody's, on someone's nickel, that's not good. Yes, Natalie?
I don't like one of those perks.
Like those, they have beer vendors, food vendors, et cetera. They give me like Disney on Ice for my kids, things of that nature. Do I need to disclose all of that or not accept them? How does that work?
So it has to be related to your city position. And if you could try to make that distinguishment, I assume because they gave it to you before you're a planning commissioner, they did it because of your business. You're, when you're getting a benefit because of public status, like I wanna curry favor with you. I want you to help me out on the planning commission, here's, here's tickets to a game. All right? So I, I think in that case, you're good.
One time we went to cap to cap.
Yes.
And the law firm that, you know, represents, took everybody to dinner.
Yep.
For like 50 people. So we had to ask the value of the dinner, include that in our report.
That's, that's very, there's a reason why a lot of are valued at $49 or less.
Oh.
Because that's the threshold, look at the bottom line on there. The gift limit is $50 to report on your Form 700 to take, if someone could take you out to dinner to Firehouse downtown and spend you, and you just gotta report on your Form 700. It's if the amount is over 590 or is a political campaign contribution over 250 where it's a non-starter. Right? So I, I mean, I can use me as an example, like we, our firm offers a minor Christmas gift. There's a reason why the mug is, or if we do a lunch or a dinner, we're gonna keep it open because we don't wanna make it difficult for you to have to report. There's nothing illegal, nothing improper about that.
And it's cumulative, right? So if they.
It is cumulative.
Dinner, $20 dinner today, we're gonna have $40 next time, yeah.
Right. If I took you to lunch every month for the next year and that lunch is $10, you'd have to report that. Right? If I, why am I using myself as an example? If somebody wanted to do work with the city, um, took you to dinner for a hundred dollars every month, that's illegal because that's now a gift in excess of the amount, right? Of the 590. It is, but you're right. It's, and it's, it's cumulative in a, in a calendar year, think of it, I'm sorry, think of it as a, from when it starts now, you restart a gift today, another one for 2024 and it's less than 590 or less than 50, you're okay. Numbers out there, the 590, the 50, the 250, you guys, what I'm saying? Okay.
Quick, quick question.
Yes.
All that relevant, but I served on a retirement board for about nine years for, for, and oh my God, it was, it was out of control. I was just like a lemming, I was just following everybody else. Have these nished over the last few years or have they been, this is, cause it's to me, you know, to come in. Oh my goodness.
Where'd our law enforcement go?
Holy crap.
The numbers, they go up.
I was an elected per, I mean, that was an elected position.
Yeah.
So I mean, I pull papers.
There's, there are people that took advantage of these and.
I, I was following the crowd.
You can claim ignorant.
And crap towards, it was unbelievable. I mean, we managed billions of.
When you manage billions, if you have company, and we do, the city, certain vendors.
Go to.
The, the, this amount does go CPI. Five years ago, it was like 520. Doesn't, so you're probably, yeah, you're going through. Meals are part of it. Actually, you know, one, I could. Gift, that's the gift rule, right? We're gonna report anything over $30 bucks on your Form 700 and those gifts over 590 are, are a problem. The, a behested payment was a workaround that some people tried to do. And now it is a law and now it's a report form 803. But you have to report if it's over $100. So what was going, was okay, if I'm a contractor, I know I can't give you over 590, but tell me what nonprofit you really like. Maybe it speaks to you. So I'm gonna go give $50,000 or you told me, hey, you can't pay me, but you go, go put a bunch of money into something I really care about? Again, it's not illegal, it just needs to be reported because people were doing these behested payments, you know, to take advantage. So now it's screwed up and now we gotta deal with it, right? I don't think that's a, probably a huge one that's likely to impact us, but just be aware. Be aware of that. The honor area, these are showing up. Officials and candidates may not accept honor area because of that purpose, because you are a planning commissioner. Are you a motivational speaker by trade? And that's what you do for paying you that? That, we're not, not gonna do that. It's when they say, I now have the mayor of Citrus here as a speaker for this event. You could do that all day long, you're welcome to speak. Get off the, you, $500 gift card to some, that's, that's illegal, you're using and for financial.
I'll be watching for that.
Good. Yeah, so payments of a speech, public, maybe you publish an article, maybe just attending a conference or an event, it can happen sometimes. What you can do is if they give you the gift for that, you can give it back or you could give it, your, to the city and let them do something with it to the benefit of the city, but you're not allowed to claim it as a deduction on your income. To public funds, I, this is when I hear all, to public funds, are we, you know, are we gonna get in trouble for spending money on a particular item, right? We do, like any other city that are appropriate, like grants to businesses. Someone had asked me one time, we, we're engaging these, um, grants to local businesses. Isn't that a gift? We're helping out? The answer is no. Those are totally, they go through a process and there is a, we have, whoever invoked the policy, that it has a community and benefit. It is, it is going to a business to beautify, to help something that's gonna help the city, not just, even though maybe those, or a loan or something might go to them.
And who defines what's the public interest?
You do. Typically.
You can make it anything.
You can make it anything and courts give a lot of, what accounts public benefit? I think test on that, you know, something that just doesn't sound right, like this is, this is a, we're gonna give this particular, whatever, person's home to beautify in the front of it and you know that person or something, that, that, that's not a gift to public funds, even though you can argue that it helps the community in general. But you'd, council or sometimes staff administratively creates policies when it comes to any expenditures. And you'll notice sometimes in it, we will, I will usually add the link that says, this is for community benefit. That's, that's just, I think this does have community benefit. I think in Citrus Heights, we careful about that. I think, because again, it's not, it's not worth it. We're gonna try to do it the right way. So, personal, right? I can't ask Chief Turk security for my party. That would be, even if he, you know, to volunteer, it'd be a misuse of, of public funds.
And I got a last point. That is, let's say that we, there was a, a business in Citrus Heights that, um, wanted to do an expansion. We deemed that, um, for the public benefit, which might, that may or may not be questionable. Are we, does, would that be applied if we decided we're waiving all the building fees, all the building permit costs and all the, all that, everything related to that gift of public funds?
Answer is no. It's not a gift of public, justify it.
We're forgiving that, even though.
Yeah. It may not be good, we don't usually like to give away, give away our, you know, revenues because they're, they're precious to us and taxpayers are paid into that. But you can, you are allowed to waive certain fees. We just don't wanna get, we need to have a justifiable reason and a policy behind it and criteria when it comes to that. We don't want to be arbitrary in who we give that to or not give that to. So you'll, you know, Director Huber, when she's coming up with policies on, on the community, the block trailer, we've developed a really comprehensive, have a threshold of facts before we decide who's, who's gonna get that benefit, right? Because you don't wanna be, you don't wanna be answering the mail after the fact of, was this a gift of public funds? Even if we said it was, clearly not, you could, you could get challenged in court and that looks, that's a bad look for the city because we.
Well, the money we have for rehabbing homes, the benefits, the homeowner, then we loan them the money, it's a loan. They don't have to until they sell the house. It's not really a gift.
Right.
So it's, but it's money out.
It is. We, we do that analysis when it comes to the, you know, it's a lot of CDBG grants and other loans that come through the state and federal government. Um, now those are not necessarily our money, but we're, we're the middleman with that. And, and sometimes those first home buyer loans, I've seen those before, or upgrading somebody's house, yeah, that, those are allowed. Gotta be careful with it.
One would think though, like we had our NIP, the NIP monies that we, the neighborhoods got, we could, we couldn't benefit private property. But in, sometimes the private person, it benefits the public if their house isn't falling down on top of them.
Yeah.
So, you know, it kind of was very strict because like a little lady who couldn't mow her lawn, the money to hire a kid to mow her lawn, it seems to me.
I, I, again, I think we can argue there's definitely a public benefit there. If it's not, we're not gonna do it. Right? There's not a good argument. Just briefly, yeah, for your discounted travel, you can't, um, receive some, when it comes, because of your position. You get it for some other reason, well, more power to you. But if it's because of your position, you are not gonna take advantage of that. I think this is more impactful if you're, you know, in a big city like San Francisco, sometimes they're like, that benefits that the rest of the public doesn't. So be aware. So be aware of also expense reimbursement, when you travel, right, we go to cap to cap or go other things, there are, we have policies in place about what's an appropriate expense. Lodging, transport. Things that are, we wanna make sure you have receipts, you're gonna make sure it hasn't, potentially meets an accountability plan to the IRS and you can't expense your spouse or partner. They could be certainly, if, if they're coming with you, staying in the same room, that's not an additional expense to the city, that's fine. But we can't, you're not gonna pay for, you know, plane tickets or additional expenses associated with somebody not affiliated. Thanks to Bell and Vernon, these are the, some of the cities that reasons, reasons why we do this, I just, even though it's now been 10 years since these came up, maybe more. City Bell, it's salaries and loans that were, that were crazy, right? Vernon, 1.6 million dollar salary plus hundreds of thousands in, in flights and hotels and all other kinds of stuff. That was all, all city expense and these were going to the high level officials in these, in these particular cities. Again, way by way example, a council. It did play no contest to misappropriation of funds, they're facing, it's now, I think it's been resolved. The city, former city manager and former assistant city manager also had convictions that resulted in prison time. So this, this stuff is real, it happens. I think these are extreme cases because they blatantly misused it. Again, hence why we do a lot of this training. So just, you know, avoid anything, not just the money part, but, but perks, these, these Bennys on the side that maybe have something to do with, just ask yourself, does that have to do with why I'm on this position? Maybe I'm getting. Normally wouldn't get. Okay. We're getting through this, guys, I promise. All right, transparency laws, I could let, Amy could brief all this because this is really her area, she's great and this is what makes. Really my job very easy because we have a great city clerk who makes sure we follow in the Brown Act, agendizing things properly, responding to Public Records Act requests. But I wanted to. To highlight some of these things that are required. We do this, we do the public's business, so we have to be open about it, we have to be transparent about it, it's required by law and, and I think it also helps gain the trust of the people that, that we all serve. There's three different areas, there's economic disclosures, this is your Form 700, then we're gonna talk a little bit about Brown Act, which is open meeting laws. You've probably, everyone's heard of the Brown Act, right, you hear this all the time, is this a Brown Act violation, are we following the Brown Act? And then Public Records Act, this is a disclosure, people get at, can see stuff you've written or things you've said. Related to city business, they have a right to, to get that, there's some exceptions that we'll, that we'll talk about. So the Form 700, this is a transparency. Thing with high level public servants to disclose your financial interests. So on your Form 700, usually you put your sources of significant income. Homes you, or any, any property you might own in the city. It applies to all, everybody in this room has to, has to file a Form 700, including city manager, I file one of Form 700, usually department heads file Form 700s. And these are available for the public. They, people can. So on the form set, you do it when you first come into office, when you leave office, and then every year you do, I think it's a plug, we have to do it pretty soon? Yes. So our city clerk is reminding me that we have Form 700, I think due April 1st-ish. So please get those done, especially the, the new people, you have to do it within so many days of, of, of taking office. And I, so you're gonna, you're gonna disclose anything you have from a financial standpoint. But what, the, the point of what it is, is these are available to the public, people can go pull it, see what a city council member has reported on there. And it lets them know, wow, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna maybe watch them, make sure they don't vote on something within their, this area, or something that they have a financial interest in. I don't know how many people actually pull them, but just, just realize that's not a document that just goes to city clerk and hides there. It is a publicly accessible document, usually, sometimes county, because it goes to the county, they might actually post it, have it available on their website to, to pull up.
You would think, though, that the 500 foot thing. You don't have to disclose the home you live in on the Form 700, doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense, I don't know why, some people still disclose it, just to over disclose, but yeah, you could, it's more like rental properties or.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're. It's not, it's not in there. I, I find a lot of things on a Form 700 is like, that's it, like there's, there's, sometimes you don't need to. Put a lot of things in there and so. There's, it's kind of limited on what you see on a Form 700. Okay, let's, I, I do wanna get in to the Brown Act, I think this is an important, important topic, I think that it's something that we hear a lot. Sometimes in the public, they wanna know, are we following the Brown Act, do we, you know, Brown Act violations are something that the. Potentially civil grand jury could look into and, or it's more, mostly it's a PR issue, it's more when the, a local newspaper or somebody will say, hey, I, I found there was a Brown Act violation, you didn't agendize this properly, or you did it too late. You know, again, we have a great city clerk who makes sure we're on top of this stuff and we really don't have these issues, but I wanna go through what the Brown Act does require. It, it requires that all your actions and deliberations happen here or happen in this building when it's agendized. They don't want, they don't want all the decisions made in some smoke filled room where everybody's deciding already ahead of time how they're gonna vote on something. And it makes it kind of interesting because a lot of times I tell people, this is like, we don't know what's gonna happen in a council meeting because these, the members have not talked to each other. It makes it actually kind of difficult, you can talk to one other person, but a lot of times this, this is, you know, reality TV at its finest because we honestly, we'll find out when everybody else finds out how the rest of the council members view something. And that's how it should be. And you can, and, but it also means that. Deliberations have to happen in front of people too. So it applies to all meetings of a legislative body, everybody here is part of a legislative body, any meetings you have, so Brown Act definitely applies to you. There were some changes under AB 361 during COVID, those expire in a couple of weeks and I'm not even sure we extended AB 361, did we? Yeah. So there was, you know, there was for a period of time, the ability to remote in and not have to report your location and have it on the agenda. That has expired, but there's a new law we're gonna talk about that does give you some flexibility in that regard. So legislative meetings, our legislative bodies, essentially everybody here, it's the city council. It's potentially, you know, districts or JPAs, commissions such as the planning commission. Every, everybody, everybody in this room is part of a body that is subject to the Brown Act. I think it's important to know what is a meeting? What does it mean that you can't, you can only have a meeting that's agendized? It's when a, it's when a majority of your body, so city council, that'd be three of you, planning commission, that'd be four of you. Commission, construction board of appeals, I don't know how many are on that, there's five, so three of you. If you're together, that's considered a meeting, if you're. So what you gotta do is you wanna wa, what you're watch, looking out for is sometimes informal discussions, you know, maybe telephone conversations. We talk about serial meetings where you, I mentioned you could talk to one other, or in your case, planning commission, two other members of your board. But if, if, if mayor talks to vice mayor and then vice mayor says, well, I'm gonna go talk to another council member, now, now we have three people involved, even though they didn't talk together at the same time. That's the idea of this, of this serial meeting.
Question.
Yes.
So. So I talked to Brett about something. Then I go talk to Tim about something, but I never say I talked to Brett, that's not, is that a serial?
Yeah, that's still a problem because you know.
Oh, because I know.
Yeah.
Okay.
I never talked to Brett.
Who talked to him?
I always say, find one person you wanna talk to about an item and that's fine. You can talk to that one if, if you wanna talk to somebody, you can talk to one person.
Well, the planning commission, they could talk to.
They could talk to two.
Two, yeah.
Yeah. Makes sense, right, because you're not, you're not getting up. You don't know where the quorum is, you don't know how everybody's voting. But it gives you the ability to talk to one other or two other members, in your case, just so in case, like, am I getting this right? What are your thoughts on this? That's okay to bounce some ideas off because you're not, you don't have the ability to change the whole vote. I mean, you're.
So Brett talks to Jana.
Yes.
And they think that that's a solo conversation. Jana doesn't realize that there's anybody else involved other than Brett and then she goes and talks to Tim. And then maybe Tim doesn't realize that Jana talked to Brett and talks to Mary Jane, so how do you prevent that? I mean, the Brown Act is very.
It is, it is. It's very squishy at times and sometimes there's not a clear answer on it, I always, you know, sometimes I'll say, that doesn't feel right, let's not do it. But I do think in that scenario, the person who's starting it is aware of who I talk to. And if, let's, so if, yes, by, a council member talks to one council member. And that other council member gets called by a third person, they should say, no, no, I can't talk to you, Dr. Jana already called me, we now can't do that. So you, you, you do need to be aware of, for yourself, but it shouldn't keep leapfrogging without your knowledge. What could happen is two couns, everybody's talking to a different council member, that's fine, because they don't know the other council members are talking, or commissioners. Does that make sense? As long as they don't ever put it together. The problem, I think, is, is emails, texts and social media, that, that is where it gets a little bit dicey. And sometimes inadvertently, you know, emails and texts you could send, realize that those can be. Even if you're responding to an email, you are potentially letting people know how you feel about something. So that's why if, if a whole commissioner, a whole council is, is on an email maybe from staff to advise about it, something in education, we usually try to encourage a blind CC on the email so that way you're, you can't reply all. It prohibits you from doing that, because we don't want you to reply, even if you just say thumbs up or I'm good with that. But starting to, to, to talk about things, we gotta be careful there. Yes, Mr. Sheeler.
Point about texts, this also in terms of. City business and. City business and what can then be asked for evidence that includes your personal phone, that, that you've done city business on.
Exactly, I, I do have a slide on the Public Records Act with regard to that, but that's another issue. So anything you're putting in writing is subject to disclosure if it's relating to city business. Text, email, social media post, to the extent we can get them, those are all, those are all subject to being disclosed. So my advice is don't put anything in writing that you're not comfortable people seeing. As long as you're, if you're cool with it, then great, put it, put it out there. But sometimes we put things in text that we don't want for public disclosure. And that has happened, you know, where I've seen a, there was a case in the city of San Jose where texts were asked by a Public Records Act. It got turned over based on litigation, tried to stop it. And it, it was some sort of, it was kind of inflammatory and embarrassing to the council of what was in those text messaging. So. Yeah. Any other thoughts or comments there? That was jumping ahead a little bit, I'm gonna cover it, but thank you, I think it's, it's very relevant. Remote meetings, you can always remote in, the old fashioned way was we would tell the city clerk, you'd post the agenda on the outside of, let's say you're at a conference, your room. And that is, that is allow, you're allowed to remote into a meeting, that way you could still do it. But the new rules under AB 2449 that just came out in January, is you're allowed to do remote access and not have to post it, not have to disclose your location if it's for certain. It says illness, family emergency, so if you're not feeling well and you still wanna participate from home, you can do that. There's a limit on how many times you can do that. I don't think there's anybody who's gonna check with a thermometer if you really are sick, so it's subject to a little bit of abuse, but let's, you know, that's what the law says. A meeting is not individual context or conversations, I was gonna say that with members of the public. So a lot of times, I know council members or commissioners might be concerned, well, a member of the public is approaching me on something that's gonna be coming up for, for maybe a vote at some point. That's not a meeting, that's, that's totally allowed, you don't have to take the meeting, you're allowed to say, no, thank you. You could say, just come to the meeting and present it at the dais or at the podium, I'm happy to hear it. But sometimes developers in particular wanna meet with council members and that's fine. What I'm gonna talk about, I'll mention it here, is we do not wanna disclose how you're voting on that, because now you've tipped your hand on it, you already, they're thinking, well, this person has. A, a way they're gonna vote, they're not open minded on that, you, you have to stay neutral until the vote is, it happens. A meeting is not a conference or an event, a social event held. Where a majority of you may be there. So I, earlier tonight, we talked about a couple crab feeds, talked about a chamber lunch, I'm thinking to myself, ooh, Brown Act, uh, no, we're good. Those are social events where the whole public can be there. So if you see all five council members or all seven planning commissioners there, that's, that's not a problem. What is a problem is if a majority are together talking about city business. So if you're all sitting at the same, I mean, truthfully, my advice would be, don't have three or more of you sitting at the same table, just because of the optics of it. Even if you're talking purely about the Super Bowl on Sunday, I still think that you don't want to be seen together, but it's not illegal. And attending other legislative bodies, if you all wanna go watch Sacramento Board of Supervisors, County Board of Supervisors meeting together, more power to you. That's not, we don't need to agendize the fact that you're gonna be there. Or if you're all at the League of California Cities Conference together, that's something a lot of commissioner or council members attend, we're not gonna post an agenda that they're there. But don't talk about city business while you're doing that stuff. Make sense? So this is the email, I mentioned that, we don't do reply all, I like BCC, please be careful there. And as Commissioner Sheiller had mentioned, there are definite Public Records Act implications when it comes to emails. It used to be, we thought the law was, if you use your personal email or your personal cellphone, it wasn't subject to disclosure. It now is, according to more recent case law, as long as it's, but they don't, they can't look at your private stuff, meaning your private emails on your private texts on there. But if you're texting about city business or emailing on your Gmail account, your, your personal Gmail account about city business. And someone asks for Public Records Act on that, we, we do have to look into even a private device or a private email and turn it over. We as a city are not in the business of asking to, we don't usually go and say, hey, send me, um, let me have access to your Gmail, wanna look through it. We're gonna rely on you to do the search and send us what's appropriate. But, you know, if somebody wants to challenge that legally and says that we don't think that there's more there, just be aware that that's potentially a problem. That's why the last bullet is there, please just use, if you have a city email address or a designated email, that way they're not, you know, looking between emails about your kids. You know, Little League game and then city stuff, we, it's, it's clearly all city business on the city email accounts, that way it's, it's not messy. Are we good with that?
Don't leave your laptop at the repair shop.
Does that happen? Yeah. Those guys like to look through stuff, don't they? Texting, same, same idea, we have similar problems, be careful about texting and issues with serial meetings on texting, just because you text somebody, that's still a communication about city business. What I would say is also avoid texting during the meeting. Avoid texting certainly between members of the body during a meeting. Or if you have a declare, if you have a conflict and you're still texting about that issue, let's go back to what I mentioned earlier in the meeting of, you, when you recuse yourself, you're out, right? We're not gonna, we're not gonna still influence it. Okay. Social media is a whole new area and it's treated differently. In my mind, a, a serial meeting is always three people. I remember I briefed this last time, I think to, to at least some members of this council and there was like, really? If you post on social media about city stuff or your thoughts on city actions, another member of your body cannot comment. On a thread that you put out there or even do an emoji like a like sign on it. In my mind, that's less than a majority, that's only two people communicating, but that's what AB 992 says, right? So, does that make sense? Right, you have one, one commissioner who posts something about, hey, um. Well, you, you should not post how you're gonna vote, but let's say, you say something about. A project that's coming up, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about this, I have some thoughts on it, I'm gonna bring them forward. Another commissioner should not tag or onto that post or respond to it, reply to it anyway. So if you wanna, again, if you wanna reply to a post or something that's not city related, all five of you can comment on that, that's not a problem. So if you're advertising about the crab feed on Saturday and you all say, I'll be there, or that's great, I've been looking forward to it, we don't have a problem, it's gotta be deliberation about city business. I feel like I'm the bearer of really depressing news at times, but that's what we're doing, we're going through it. Um, yeah, so you're liking the emoji, that's, that's problematic. Posting requirements, we make sure the agenda's posted at least 72 hours, we typically do it in advance of that. So if our meetings are on Thursday, we're typically for council, posting it the Friday before, which is like 100 plus hours in advance. But that gives the public and gives the council all weekend to review it. We could change the agenda or post it on Monday and be fine before 6:00 PM. We could change the agenda or post it on Monday and be fine before 6:00 PM. And so that does give us a little bit of flexibility if for some reason we need to modify the agenda. We realize on Monday we want to agenda, modify, you can. But inside the 72 hour window, you're not allowed to adjust the agenda unless it's for an emergency item or you want to post a special meeting which only has a 24 hour notice. Right? And we have to put it on the city's homepage. You also, the, there's new ADA requirements about making sure it has a certain visibility and it has to be searchable, downloadable, indexable, all the documents on there with the.
So Ryan, what does a special meeting mean?
Special meeting is any, any meeting that's not a regular meeting. How about that? It, it's, all it is, it's still a meeting of the city council. And pretty much anything can be done at a special meeting. It could be at a regular meeting. There are just a few exceptions. Passing taxes, passing the first readings of ordinance, or first or a second reading of an ordinance has to be at a regular meeting. But for the most part, you can do special meetings whenever you want to. But I think by its term special, it, the legislature's kind of implying like something out of the ordinary happened that requires this. And it, it does have, you know, they happen. In Citrus Heights, we really don't have a lot of special meetings.
I can give an example of one we did. We went to bid on a project and there were no responsive bidders. And so we had a special meeting to reissue the RFP. Cause didn't want to wait until the next council meeting, so we had a special meeting for them.
Our strategic planning meeting is, is agendized as a special meeting. We do though, even though we only have to agendize it 24 hours in advance, we still follow the 72 hour rule, just because we might as well, right? Let's get ahead of it and be as, as transparent as we can on that. Yeah, does that answer your question on special meetings? So posting, we gotta put the time and location. And when it comes to the agenda, you just gotta give a general description of the item. You don't have to, you, we can change the staff report in it. We can modify even other stuff within it. The general description that's on there has to be, has to give the public an idea of what's gonna be on the agenda. We're not sneaking anything on there that they didn't know about. And it's gotta give enough description to the public, be like, yeah, if I, that, that, that gives me enough awareness that this is a topic I'd want to show up for. Or I could, I could care less about that agenda. I'm not gonna show up. So if all of a sudden we talk about something that they really cared about, because, and it wasn't on the agenda, that's a problem. So closed session needs to be on there. The posting is, we're not gonna talk about anything that's not posted on the agenda. We can't do that. There are some limited exceptions. I mentioned an emergency that needs immediate action. You need a fourth, uh, two thirds, which in this case of a council is a four fifths vote to take immediate action, but you no kidding, it's gotta be something that has potential, you know, immediate impacts to the city. When it comes to questions from the public and public comment, I, my advice, well, it's a non-agendized item. Unless they're talking about an agendized item, but if they come up in the regular public comment, you really should only say, thank you for your comment. We appreciate that. You could say, I'd like to direct you to staff member after the meeting. You're welcome to talk to Chief Turcot about that law enforcement issue. You're welcome to talk to our city manager or city clerk. That would be an appropriate response, I think, is to direct them to the right staff member to help them with that issue. But to start deliberating on it is, is not, it's not appropriate. And I know that's, I think Mayor's had a good job now of, of trying to explain that to the, because it's, it's sort of embarrassing. People are like pleading their heart out there. I've got this terrible pothole. I've got this thing that's going on in my, and we're just like, see ya. So we try to show some compassion and explain to them, we legally can't respond. But here's how we can, you know, here's a quick push on how you can deal with this through our, through our staff. Same thing with your board reports and comments. You know, we do have an open item in the agenda to allow you to report. We want to, report is meant to be on what you've been doing, not getting into something that's not on the agenda to have a discussion about it. Future agendas, the same way. I, yeah, in the, in the past, I have had, I jumped in a couple of times where our future agenda discussion kind of turned into a real discussion of the item. And I get it, like, if we're gonna talk about whether we want to talk about something, you need to talk a little bit about it, but it's just enough to know whether it's something we want to put on the agenda, not the merits of it. So that's why I sometimes will poke my head in that. Closed session, there's certain very specific things, because the most part, we want to do everything in front of the public. There are a couple of things that make sense. Litigation, and we're not gonna talk about our litigation strategy in front of the public, what we'd settle a case for, or whether we're gonna, that's not appropriate. Real property negotiations are, like what we'll pay for, for a, for a piece of property. And then labor negotiation, negotiation. If you're giving us direction on how to negotiate with a labor organization, that can be in closed session. We also gotta make sure what we're talking about there stays in there. Consequences of brownback violations, yeah, I mean, it could nullify the decision. Maybe the DA gets involved and there's some criminal stuff, but really it's more of the, the adverse media attention is kind of the, where it looks bad. So Mr. Sheeler mentioned the Public Records Act. Th- this is a, a law to help people see what's going on and they can get into the city's documents. They want to see almost any writing we have, we're gonna turn over to them. And we have, so they, and that could include your correspondence. If you've got emails related to something, sometimes Public Records Act says, I want to see all the council members' emails regarding this project. We're gonna turn that over. We're gonna ask you for them and turn them over. There are some exceptions, right? And I'll get through, I'll get through those in a second. But it's also photographs, video, this in law enforcement realm, Public Records Act requests are, are quite relevant when it comes to investigations. Though there are exceptions for pending investigations. And then electronic data can be disclosed too. We tell people that they can come in and inspect it. If they want to just, if the items are like in, in a big box, we'll say, hey, instead of us copying them all for you, you can come and look at them and see what you want. That's, that's one way to respond, because you, you gotta make the records available. What we need is a, a request that reasonably describes what you're looking for. So you can't, and we're pretty open about that. If it's, if it's, if you generally describe what you want, we're gonna try to respond to it. Used, there's a form and stuff people try to use, but if it's, if you send an email saying we want something, we're gonna try to turn it over, as long as it's focused and specific and not just give me everything on, you know, taxes or something, that's.
So I have a, I have a question in that regard. So let's say that, that there wasn't a closed session meeting on a particular topic, but there was a real estate transaction that was happening. Because real estate transactions could be considered closed session items, is that disclosable on a public, uh, public records request? If I said, I want to know that property on Auburn Boulevard that the city purchased and what's going on with that. And, um, and the, but there's never been a closed session meeting on that. Is, is that required to be disclosed?
Yes, it is, unless it's in draft format or subject to some kind of litigation. But for the most part, any signed contract, document, act, real, real property, um, purchase and sale agreement, that's all disclosed.
But as soon as there's a closed session on that topic, it's off the record.
Maybe, but maybe not. Maybe the documents, the discussions in closed session would not be disclosable, but a signed document, I think probably would be.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there like a form that a person fills out and submits for this? Do they?
Yeah, we do have a form. We try to get them to use it because it helps. Like, what do you want? You know, what's your address? How do we get it back to you? We just can't require, you're not allowed, legally allowed to require them to use the form.
Oh, okay.
So if they just email the city clerk and say, I want these doc, you want the, you know, a con, you want the city attorney's contract or something, we turn that, we just turn it over, yeah. The only thing we could charge to people, I say, oh, I want to charge, you know, it took us 10 hours to come up with these things. Staff time is not allowable. Only thing we could charge is the duplication costs, so.
$10 a page.
Reasonable duplication costs. Whoops. Uh, where did I go? Let me go back this way. Okay. So we have 10 days to respond. We don't have to provide all the documents within 10 days, but we've gotta be pretty responsive to a request. We can, if it takes more time to turn it over, as long as we're working on it, we can ask for extensions. And we get, if we're gonna deny it, we're gonna state the people, I guess, responsible for the denial. And we, we give the public reasonable assistance in identifying what they want. Sometimes people don't quite know what they want. We'll talk to them, help them out, and then we can, we can provide the, the disclosure. So these are the things that are not releasable, things that are in draft format. So if, if that real property document hasn't been signed yet and we're still working on it, that doesn't need to be disclosed. But once it's a signed agreement of the city, we're, we're probably turning it over. Pending litigation records, right? If I've given a memo or something that, that's related to our risk on something, we're not gonna turn that over. Emails or communications with your legal counsel wouldn't be turned over. Complaints and investigations is subject to some disclosure, but anything ongoing, we don't turn over. Personnel records are, are not disclosable to, you know, people sometimes will ask, I want to see how somebody was disciplined, that, that, well, we're not even gonna respond whether they were or were not disciplined, let alone provide some record of that. Peace officer records are a little unique. There's something called a pitchus motion, where you want to get personnel records of a police officer or anything related to that. And then there's a new SB 1421 rec, law out there when it comes to peace officer records that, that our office is aware of, and we go through an analysis whether those will be released. Financial data, trade secrets, security information, architectural drawing, those kind of all make sense of things. You know, we're not gonna turn over stuff that somehow tells you exactly where, you know, s- s- cameras are, security, if, if it's appropriate not to release. Especially sometimes businesses give us information that's like their trade secret related to what they do. We don't give that to another party. Or if it's architectural drawings they've spent a bunch of money on, that we don't have to turn all those over. Some we do, but there are some things that are, that are copyrighted and not, not appropriate. I will say that courts, uh, when they do the analysis on this are, are more apt to push towards disclosure than not turning things over. So you could have a court order on that. Um, and if you lose, there's attorney's fees for the prevailing plaintiff, and again, the media attention is not good. I think you need to assume that anything you're putting in writing is gonna be public and will become public. And please just don't discuss your business with other people, other than maybe the one or two cases in the planning commission's realm. Okay, this, we're, we're literally the homestretch. Hang in there with me, guys. I'm, I appreciate your, your attention, but this is the last part. Fair process laws. You've gotta be impartial, not show favoritism. So we'll, we'll get into what that means. People have a right to know that the decision is somebody who hasn't already made up their mind or has some kind of bias associated with what the, the thing is. So we're gonna tell, there's common law bias, there's due process requirements, there's something called incompatible offices. And then competitive bidding. Which is before sort of statutory law on this, is people are entitled to a fair and impartial hearing. People should not have a personal interest in the outcome, and that would, if you do, you should possibly disqualify yourself. It's okay to have strong opinions, and you can even express those before a hearing, but you cannot be, they say closed mind. The, the other term I've heard is an inelastic disposition. You can't be so wedded to how this is gonna come out that you're not willing to listen to the people who come to the podium and be potentially swayed by them. You don't make your decision until it's time to vote, right? You're probably leaning, but let's wait until we've, all the chips are on the table before, or all the cards are played, I guess I should say, until you make that vote. This is where sometimes I, you know, there's some cases out there where the, either commissioner or council member was personally embroiled in it. That was, um, for example, in this case, there was, a council member had done like a whole like field investigation and was really involved in, in what was going on out there, you know? We're gonna ask that you defer to what's happening in the, in the meeting, you know, what has staff done? You're welcome to go by side. I think it's probably helpful. Sometimes you see a, a project and you're looking, you're thinking, how's the parking gonna work? I want to go out there and check it out. That's okay. It's different though, when you're poking around and doing a whole bunch of like your own private investigation on, on stuff. So due process, I mentioned this a little bit earlier. We gotta make sure that the hearing is fair. You gotta give people notice, give an opportunity to be heard, an opportunity to prepare and have that fair and impartial, um, hearing. And what a fair and impartial hearing, the, the due process does change based on the stake of the interest. So it's hard to justify, you know, what, what is important to somebody may not be important to others, or it's, it's kind of subjective. But the due process requirements do vary based on what the issue is we're talking about. So it's okay to express your opinions in the, in the community. Again, opinions is one thing. How I'm gonna vote is, is not good. You go to community meetings, maybe you go to like your neighborhood associations, people are gonna ask you about stuff. And that's, that's good. You want to take in what they're doing, and you could even give them overall thoughts you might have. I, I really would advise even against that. I think you're better off just saying, I appreciate that. I'm gonna, that's gonna factor into my decision. But I, you know, haven't made up my mind. We'll see how it goes. You're allowed to have prior factual knowledge. Campaigning is like a whole different animal, and they give people discretion, because a lot of people make a lot of statements during the campaign season that are, is not gonna taint them from being able to vote on it later, okay? The, sort of an exception, because you're asked about all kinds of stuff, you know, in forums or wherever, and so that's, that's an exception. Incompatible offices, you can't be in two offices at once, that, um, if there's a potential clash of duties or loyalties between the offices. I'll give an example. We had, Councilmember Miller was on here before. He ran for the, um, San Juan School Board. He said, I want to, I want to stay on this, I want to stay on the both. I want to try to do both. The, there's Attorney General per, um, opinions that say that is clearly an incompatible office. They don't, I mean, well, they potentially could overlap, but you have issues that, 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 that overlap, and so that's why you, you can't do that. Other bodies that you want to be a part of, if there's no impact, it doesn't, it doesn't, we're never gonna question who your, you know, loyalty is to. Is it gonna be the city of this other entity, then you're, then you're okay. So there's been rules about, and Attorney General provisions on what is considered incompatible offices or not.
So you can, you can run for multiple offices, but you can't sit on.
Right.
You can't have both of them.
You can run for multiple, you can't be on both, and this is what happens. So you are deemed to have forfeited the first office upon, says a seating, basically getting sworn in to your second office. You're on city council, you run for something else, and as soon as you take that oath, you've given up your city council seat. Usually they, you know, you're okay with that, like you're aware of that, but just, just be, be aware. It doesn't apply to if you're only having advisory type positions. I mentioned that. So competitive bidding, we're, we're, we, we do a good job of this. This is really a lot of times in our general services department, when we're contracting out stuff. We're gonna make sure we go through the competitive bidding laws, or anything over 5,000, which is a really low threshold. You've got to bid out because it's considered a public work. Public works are things that are, well, what you think of, right? Repaving or construction, fixing city hall, fixing a police department, those will all be public works, contracts that have to go to the lowest responsible bidder. And you can't sort of split up a project to get it under 5,000 to try to avoid competitive bidding. We also have, well, there are exceptions. So when you want to hire like an engineering firm or certain, some, some things that are considered professional services don't have to go through that professional, according to state law. But we as a city have a purchasing code that mandates anything over a threshold, which I think is $50,000, does have to go through competitive bidding. You do have the ability to reject all bids. If you don't like, they came in too high, we can reject them all. And you could then dispense with further bidding and put it out to the open market if you want. If you get no bids, you are also then allowed to dispense with the, um, the formal process and could just contract with somebody you want directly. The violations is where we have bid protest issues. Sometimes people will, will complain, we didn't follow it. Again, very rare, but it does void the contract. And I mentioned before that the purchasing policy we have in place goes above and beyond what state law requires. It, it requires, some, some things need to be bitted out. Also, who has the authority to approve a contract, right? There's certain things that go to a director level, certain things that go to a city manager level, and then anything above $50,000 goes to the city council. Okay, we're done. So I want to thank you for that, for your attention. I know it's a lot. Sorry, I wasn't as humorous as we were hoping for, but you know, the material is what it is, right? But I want you to, to, to be mindful of the position that you're in. Use my office when you, when you need be. I think we do a really good job of being. I think we do a really good job of being transparent, we try to go above and beyond, you notice a lot of these things, we're, we're in excess of it, and I think that's what we're shooting for. So, any, any questions, comments?
Sorry. Sorry. No.
Great.
Yeah.
All set?
All right.
May I have the next item, please?
So our next item here is department reports, and there are none, so our next item is city manager items.
Thank you, Amy. Good evening, Mayor Shaver, Vice Mayor Daniels, members of the city council, Ashley Finney, your city manager. I do have one item to highlight that occurred this week. I was on my way, going down Greenback on early Tuesday morning, and I noticed there was just motorcycles everywhere. And I knew we were having an exercise coming up, but I was just really excited to see that that was deployed. You may have seen some additional police motorcycle units out on Tuesday morning, but we actually had a collaborative traffic enforcement operation, and it involved the city of Citrus Heights, our motorcycles, our, our motorcycle officers, as well as Folsom, West Sacramento and Elk Grove. It started at 7:30 in the morning, and it ran for about three hours. There was 131 traffic stops that were made, and 113 citations were issued. And this was really kind of born out of a lot of the discussions that we've been having over the course of the last year about really trying to slow the city down. A slow city is a safe city, so Chief Turcot, our command staff have been coordinating with our partner agencies to see what we could do on some joint operations, so really happy to see that get rolled out here. We will be continuing to partner with our partnership agencies on operations like this, so, good to see that, appreciate all their cooperation and collaboration, but just wanted to highlight that if the community was wondering about kind of a squadron of motorcycles, if you will, that was out and about. And that concludes my updates.
Great, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is items requested by council members or any future agenda items.
Any items? Nope. All right, no items, next item.
There are no further items.
Very good. With that, at 8:13, I adjourn this meeting.